Cecil Beben over here.
We're in. It says record.
It says record.
Right, that's it? We're good?
We're good.
John is doing it.
Yes. Desperate times call for desperate measures.
No, John is not.
Okay.
We're all in.
Any last trips?
No.
You know what I do? Some of the games are destined to leadership.
Oh, you mean answers?
Yeah, for the year. So if you ever need to use it. I know, well, that's why I'm asking about buses building there. That's the C's where you go. Oh, yeah, well, traffic's open.
Okay, chair is going to resume the meeting at 7:25. Trustee Parrish, would you be kind enough to call the roles?
Yes, Doc. John DeGrace, John Dershowitz.
Yep.
George Goyd.
President.
Linda Green.
Here.
Wanda Jackson.
Here.
Ed Fowles, President.
Here.
Donna Tunnell. Kathy Bell.
Present.
Bridget Russell.
Present.
Doc, we have a court.
Okay, we've got an 80 percent. It's an eight. All right, can I have a motion to approve the September 10, 2019 minutes?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any against? I'm going to abstain because I was... Oh, yeah, I was here, I was here.
Right, I have to have stayed over ten.
That's... I knew there was somebody present. One session. Do I have a motion to approve the October 15, 2019 minutes?
So moved.
Second? And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, already.
Aye. I abstain.
I abstain.
So we got a six-four count?
Yes.
Okay. Additional reports may be forthcoming as a result of these limitations.
You can't have a six-four count because I'm...
No, but in October, this should have been...
I know what I'm saying, the count can't be six-four. That adds up to...
That'll be five. Well, they have five fifty, so this will have to wait.
Sorry.
No, 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 that's perfect.
I didn't want it to read something that we can't add.
So we cannot approve the October 15, 2019. Apparently. All right, trustee West, would you read the first?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Resolved upon the recommendation of the Nassau Community College Board of Trustees Finance and Capital Committee, the Nassau Community College Board of Trustees hereby approves the pending college agreement with VRD Contracting Inc. in the amount of $31,583,200,000 as requested by Vice President Facilities Management Muscarella, funding source Capital Project 7008A.
Do I have a motion to consider this item?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
I will second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Motion carries. Trustee Russell, would you be kind enough to be the next?
We just got the resolution on that.
Yep. Chief Johnson speaking.
Be it resolved that Nassau Community College fully supports the proposal that New York State change the basic state aid formula allocation for each community colleges to be permanently set at 100% of the previous year or $100 increase per FTE with whichever is more.
Do I have a motion to consider this item?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Motion carries. All right. I'm going to make a motion under Article 8, Section C6 in the Boards and Rules of Procedure to allow for the consideration of an item that did not appear on the calendar.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Motion carries. Trustee Parrish, would you like to do the honors?
It is resolved Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the President of the College to execute the ESA on behalf of the College but only upon satisfactory resolution of the conditions listed below. Receive and review of the final pre-executed version of the MEA to be executed by the county and Nassau Energy by the College President in order to ensure that the terms of the final MEA, Master Energy Agreement, do not adversely affect the College to receive and review of the final pre-executed version of the lease agreement to be executed by the county and Nassau Energy by the College President in order to ensure that the terms of the final lease agreement do not adversely affect the College co-generation. Be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the President of the College to consent on behalf of the College to the 1990 easement amendments and to the easement agreement with respect to the College parcel but only upon satisfactory resolution of the conditions listed below. One, renew the College, by the College, of the above documents to ensure that the documents sufficiently protect the College's interest in subject real property and the approval of the documents is consistent with the College Board of Trustees' responsibilities concerning the custody control management over real property in accordance with Education Law, Section 6306. Two, ensuring that all approvals of governing bodies, if such approvals are required by New York State Education Law and regulations governing the operations of community colleges subsections of the CCR, video of Chapter 5, Subchapter D, Quad 6035 are duly obtained.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parrish. Do I have a motion to consider this item?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion on this item?
Do you want to explain it a little further?
I think Dr. West is going to take the crack at this.
I am.
Oh, did you say anybody? All right, so it was brought to our attention that we have a co-generation plant that we've been working with. Ms. Muscarla was telling us before our committee meetings. And we are having an easement of a piece of property from the College towards that end. There is negotiations that will lead for some fiscal reimbursement to the College that has to be worked out in a... by the attorneys and folks in progress. We have the law firm, Mr. Smith, who has been reviewing this since it was presented to them in August and has done a Herculean effort in dissecting and putting the College in the best stead for this contract that we have ever had with the co-generation plan since 1980. So. I'm going to vote on this resolution, all in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Motion carries nine zero. I'm going to go to the board of presidents.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a presentation in regards to guided pathways in a few minutes, but I just wanted to really quickly share some student highlights. And there were quite a few students who showed up at a listening session last week to really share the opportunities and challenges that they see as students here at the College. It was a fantastic opportunity to hear directly from them. So I'm appreciative of their support as we endeavor to advance the College. The other, really quickly, what I wanted to share with the boards or the board is aware of, you know, the fantastic things that are happening is in regards to athletics. So our men's soccer team is returning to a national tournament where they finished second in the country last year. Their first match is on Thursday against Genesee. The Nassau women's soccer team is headed back to national tournament as well. And their first game is Thursday as well. They're matched against Mohawk Valley. Men's football finished the regular season with a win Saturday against Navy Prep. They're currently ranked 19th in the country. And we'll be hearing some news about them later on. And, excuse me, last year, they won the red-orange, excuse me, red-orange ball in Illinois. And we're looking forward to another opportunity to compete. Men's and women's basketball, I both started the season strong. They're ranked sixth and fourth in the country respectively. And men's wrestling is preseason ranked 13th in the country, which is overall inclusive of D1 full scholarship program. So there's a lot to be proud of at the College, within the classroom and outside the classroom. And now I just want to take a few minutes, it's going to be a few more than a few, to share some information with the Board of Trustees, which I won't be reading, so it'll sound much smoother, and regards to guided pathways. As I mentioned previously, we're in the second cohort of guided pathways. And to quickly move through this, this is our, you know, a wonderful student set while we're here, right? Student success, and you all have seen this, I sent this out. Some factoids about the College, you know, lots of fantastic characteristics that we have. Wonderful institutions where our students transfer. I think we all, we all know that. When we look at our retention rate for first-time, full-time students, you know, we look at Nassau Community College on the right and then our comparison group, which is 19 other institutions on the left, you'll see that we're, you know, above and better than a comparison group in both for full-time and part-time retention rate for our cohorts. When we get to graduation rate, and I'm going to kind of speed through this to get to, you know, some other data, you'll see that Nassau Community College is in orange, our comparison group is in blue. So when we get to graduation rate, we're slightly lower than our comparison average, 24%, 26%, and transfer out rate is 20% versus 16%. So we're slightly higher than our comparison rate. So I'll pause here for a second, you know, there's fantastic, as we know, outcomes associated with the College, and there's a lot to be proud of. When we look at this slide, it starts to get us into guided pathways and some other metrics that are against a national initiative. Essentially, 24 and 20, we're looking at, you know, less than one in every two of our students are completing or transferring out, right? And they're 150% of their time. All right, so less than 50%. So we see the start of, you know, some opportunities here at the College. You know, our students are coming to complete, they're coming to transfer out, yet, you know, 44% are doing one or the other. So when we look at this, these KPIs, early ones of KPI metrics, which again, this is based on first-time-ever-in-college students. So these are students who come to us with no college credits, no AP, no dual enrollment, no IB. This is their first time ever in college. And we look at some key indicators, and again, this is based on a national initiative, so these aren't just kind of indicators we made up. We've applied our data to the indicators. We're looking at six fall, okay, so from fall 2013 to fall 2018, and there's just a demographic composition. This is 21,802 students, first-time-ever-in-college, 21,802 students over six falls. And this is the demographic, demographic composition, right? This is the persistency rate on average over these six falls. It's 82% that are persisting from one semester to next, first term to second, to be exact. That's great, that's more than eight out of every 10. They're getting here in the fall and they're persisting to their, to their second term. And when we look at that breakdown by race, ethnicity, we do see some opportunity there. You know, some of our groups are lower than the average, so there definitely some opportunities there. One of the key pieces, then we start to kind of really dive in and look at, look at some data. So these are the metrics. The ones in blue are associated with a first semester. The ones in orange are associated with accomplishments in the first year. Read them, none of them, we can see them. So the first one is earn six credits in your first term. The second one is earn 12 credits in your first term. All right, so if, you know, basically, 68%, right? That's essentially you are going to complete, 68% of the students are going to complete if you're earning six credits in your first term. So that's essentially what's going to occur. So it's fantastic, right? If you earn six credits in your first term, essentially, 68% of those students are going to complete within three years, great. 12 credits in your first term, of that cohort, about eight in every 10 of those students are going to complete, all right, in three years. 15 credits in your first year, you kind of get where we're going. 76% of the students who accomplish that goal are completing in three years, 24 credits. And you'll see it gets, the percentage and the likelihood of completion gets higher. You know, earn 24 credits, 86%. Earn 30 credits in your first year, you know, more than nine out of every 10 students who have done that first-time-ever-accomplished students are completing in three years. Here's, here's where it gets interesting. Of the 21,802 students, the six falls, 34% of them are actually completing six credits in the first term. One in three. One in five are actually completing 12 credits in the first term. One in four are completing 15 credits in the, in the first year. About one in 10 are 12%, I'm going to give it a short shrift, are completing 24 credits in their first year. And 5% of first-time-ever-accomplished students are completing 10 credits in the first year. As a reminder, this is the likelihood that you complete in three years. It's the previous slide, based on these benchmarks. So if you earn 30 credits in your first year, more than nine out of 10 students are graduating in three years. 5% of our first-time-ever-accomplished students are actually meeting that benchmark over the course of six falls. So, when we praise all the good things that are happening, which is fantastic, we do, let's, let us not forget, 82% persist from term one to term two. The question we have to look at, or a question is, what are they persisting with? How many credits were they persisting with? How does that translate into their likelihood of actually earning a degree and a timely degree, right? And I'll go through some of these to get to really the framework of guided pathways. When we look at these benchmarks, the ones on the left, the two on the left are the first semester, the three on the right are the first year. And we look at the demographic breakdown as far as race, ethnicity, we, we start to see that it's not proportional to the actual FTIC demographic breakdown, right? And we actually start to see, if you kind of go to the right side, a lot more conversations about this. In the first year, you'll, you'll see the drop. The purplish bar is our students who identify as African-American or black. The orangish bar, the students who identify as Hispanic or Asian. And you'll see as that credit threshold increases, the percentage, the composition decreases of our underrepresented minorities. Our Asian students stay about the same, our other category is somewhat stable as well. So, just kind of reflecting and reinforcing, this is the breakdown, right? It's 29%, 22%, Hispanic or Asian, 29%, Black African-American, 22%. 38% of the students are identified as Black. At no point in time in any of this is this proportional in regards to our African-American students, our students who identify as Hispanic or Asian. 28.5% is the closest we come, and that's earn six credits. After that, there's, there's trouble. So, as we move further along, and I'm just really going to direct everyone's eyes because it's a really, it's a really detailed and lengthy conversation to the, to the right side. And these numbers don't add up to 100. Essentially, it's if you're in these groups, you know, these racial ethnic groups, you know, what's the percentage of students who are actually attained with these? So it's not 100% of the students who are there. It's actually within the group, within group comparison, what's the percentage? And as we look, we see, we continue to see gaps, right? Opportunity gaps, as we call them. Look at them as deficits. But if we look to kind of go over to that earn 30 credits at the very last, regardless of what group we look at, I mean, now, our students who identify as, as Asian are 29%. It's definitely the highest, and our students who identify as other, 24%, which is, that's still one in three, less than one in three, and one in four. And they're the smaller cohorts of the FTIC first-time-ever-in-college students. If you look at the three largest cohorts, the ones that's doing the best, even if you identify as Caucasian in ways, is 10% of that population is getting 30 credits in the first year. 4%, African-American, Black population, 6% Hispanic or Asian population. So this begs the question and provides an opportunity to reflect on who we are, right? And if you read this up here, you'll identify these, I'm sure, everyone in the room will. You know, these are really straight from our mission. So, so having this, these data points provides us with an opportunity to, you know, we're all committed to the mission, but to really, you know, take that hard look and see, you know, if that's what the data are sharing, that's what's being reflected, then what more can we do so that we're offering full-up training programs for the benefit of the first population? What more can we do so that we're ensuring that every student at Nassau Community College succeeds, but at the College and beyond? And when we think about that, and we think about equality versus equity, and what that means, right? So equality, you know, you're providing everybody with the exact same thing regardless of how they answer the situation. Everyone in the room today, you all received congratulations, you know, a women's size nine shoe. I hope you liked the gift. Congratulations, you've all been treated equally tonight. However, there's only a few of you in the room that can actually use that, right? And if really wanted to provide something to help you walk and secure your back and make sure you don't have like hip dysplasia, I'd probably get you footwear that would accommodate all of your, right? So that would be equity. That would be equity. And that's what we're thinking about as we move forward is, how can we be equitable in all that we do? How can we be student-focused? And that's really what guided pathways framework provides. The reason why I'm using this platform in the few minutes I have with this board to share is because where this is done really well is full institutional support from, from, from the board to everyone around. So it's really important that this information gets shared. Today, we have more conversations about how we can advance this guided pathways framework and this idea of equity. So what does it mean essentially to be student-ready? To, so that, ensuring that we're data-informed, ensuring that this is a college-wide approach. And while we do this in pockets, I've met with several people that talk about equity and how they apply it in their classroom or during their advising sessions. The paradigm shift will be for us to do this holistically as an institution throughout every single facet, whether it be from, you know, facilities to financial aid, to advising, to the classroom. How do we create this framework that is systemic and systematic in regards to addressing those achievement gaps that we just saw a few months ago? And as I close with the last few slides, I'd ask you to focus your eyes on the right side. It's, it's, it's the right side in green, and those are the four pillars of guided pathways. Again, the national initiative that SUNY has provided resources for, for us to pursue with the national initiative, which is clarifying the pathways that are based on an end goal, right? So helping students identify what their pathway is going to be based on where they want to be in three years, in four years, in five years. Helping students actually get on that path. Helping students stay on their path and ensuring students are learning. Those are the four pillars. In the next few slides, we'll just briefly, I'm not going to read them, but it provides some ideas. And some of these things we're, we're pursuing, which is, which is great in regards to what it means if you're identifying a path linked to a goal. So having academic and career communities, things that some institutions call, call meta-majors. So students go into groups or grouping of kind of an academic discipline, and they're familiar with those so that if they stray, you know, they're not going from business to nursing. You know, there's something within their academic community. They're staying in that because we've helped them identify from the very beginning that that's kind of where they want to be. When we look at, you know, clearly specified career and transfer opportunities and requirements for, for all programs. So those, again, these are things that we're working on, but also opportunities that we have to enhance. Getting students on a path, we think about, you know, currently, what happens at a lot of institutions of higher education, you know, the very top piece, having job and transfer support for students approaching completion. So you're in your second year, you're in the second semester of your second year, let's talk about career, let's talk about transfer. Let's provide that support. As opposed to guided pathways is ensuring that this is there from the very beginning. Let's talk about that career piece, let's talk about that, that transfer piece from the very beginning so you know what you're doing. Staying on a path, you have the ideas of, I'll go over the top one again, kind of giving everything at orientation as to, you know, opposed to, you know, support for major decisions along a student's paths, right? Often, because we have limited time with students, we say, that's great, it's a wonderful, you know, kind of concept to see to know. Put it in orientation, or put it in NCC 101, which is our transition course, right? That's before they've started and/or during the first semester, right? But having timely information during key points throughout a student's educational career would be really what we're looking for, as opposed to try and put it all in front, in front of the year. And I'll, kind of this last piece is that the fourth pillar is kind of ensuring learning. And you'll see that there are, you know, opportunities here in regards to contextualize general education courses, learning both inside and outside the classroom. Now, I mentioned these, these are examples. I want to reiterate this, right? I made this presentation a little bit longer and had videos and audio to several members of the College Community about a week ago. These are examples. These are things that other institutions of higher education have undertaken in regards to getting from, or getting towards a guided pathways model. What we need to do is create a guided pathways framework that is aligned with Nassau Community College, right? I know, you know, people under, you know, kind of the idea of adoption versus adaption, right? You know, if we solely adopt something, that might not work for us because what works for Mohawk Valley or works for Genesee, they're not Nassau. But, but we can adapt. We can take these basic pillars and some essential frameworks and adapt them and mold them to what we have, the resources that we have, the culture of the College, the students that we serve at the College, students who usually saw the demographic, usually saw the achievement opportunities at the College, and use that as a framework to move this guided pathways initiative forward. So that's what I wanted to spend a few minutes, using my board report time, to share with you all. This is a multi-year process. For the institutions that have done it and they've been doing it for years, you spend a year to a year and a half doing what we're doing right now, which is sharing it with certain constituents, helping people understand, being asked challenging questions, like the ones I was thankful to receive and did receive at the general faculty meeting about a week ago, were actually, there'll be a message sent in regards to other Q and As that we'll have around guided pathways in December, open to the entire college community because we literally just started the conversation. But you spend a year to a year and a half having the conversation, putting together the teams, and identifying where are our opportunities as an institution? This isn't plug-and-play. It's not microwaveable, all right? That's, that's really important to impress upon people. This has to be Nassau-specific, so we need to continue the dialogue. Again, identifying teams. We need to be open to change and iterations, right? This is not something, or I say it in another positive way, this is going to evolve, right? When we learn something, whether it be an intended or an unintended outcome, we need to embrace both with enthusiasm and vigor. to embrace both with enthusiasm and vigor, knowing that it's getting us ultimately to the end goal. We can't say, "Oh, everything didn't turn out the way we thought it was going to turn out with this instance, so let's just jettison guided pathways." This takes time, this takes dedication, and people, we all need to be open to the idea that it's a learning process, and we're going to go through several iterations, which really segues into the learning component of it, is that we need to endeavor to really learn and, this is again, it's a multi-year process, and I do have examples through research of institutions that have embraced this, and they have seen just demonstrative change in regards to student outcomes. We are one of eighteen of the thirty community colleges in SUNY that are pursuing this guided pathways initiative. There are other institutions, several around the nation, that are pursuing this. This is an opportunity that is worthwhile, is dedicated to student success, it's really looking at putting the students first and foremost, and looking at us being student-ready, as opposed to kind of the adage of students needing to be college-ready. And students coming in and saying, "Well, I don't understand this." How many students does it take for any institution of higher education for them to say, "I don't understand this," for us to say, "Well, that's our policy, that's our process." We have to start rethinking how we do things, and we've already started, which is a great thing. There's things that I've illustrated that have already, conversations I've already covered, like co-requisite model, and, excuse me, multiple measures and things of that nature. So we're on the way, but we are starting this as a concerted effort, a global effort. We need to take the advancements that have occurred and really, capital on us on those, but I'll come back to the board with more opportunities in regards to how you can be engaged as a board and how you can support this institution-wide effort, which was important for me to share that with the room today. So that is, that's my time, I appreciate you all. Thanks.
Thank you. I just have, thank you, that was very informative, and I appreciated receiving the entire document, because we were able to see some of those slides. I just had two things quickly. Trustee Sibron and I attended the fall colloquium on dual enrollment and found it fascinating. It really relates to high school students receiving NCC credit. The kind of program we're talking about was presented is at their local high schools. And I can share that the meetings that Dr. Williams and I have attended with the local superintendents, that is the topic that has come up at three of the meetings, and we have one more tomorrow, and I will predict that that will come up. And it was a fascinating meeting. The other was that many of you know that the New York State Senate Higher Education Committee had a hearing here on campus. And in addition to Dr. Williams and Patricia Norlin and William Clive Jr., Frank Fresenda and Donna Hope made presentations. But Dr. Williams was kind enough to queue up the YouTube video, which by the way is four hours in length, to our student government president, and I need to comment, and I encourage all of you to see it. Bryce Back spoke about his own personal life, and what was fascinating about this young man is that he talked about how he was homeless for two months, was forced to live in a hotel, whatever money he made through the two jobs he had and his mom's money went to pay for that hotel. And he talked about how important education is, and the quote that I love, what he said to these people was, "Education is a right, not a privilege, so please start treating it that way." But you should, he is a role model that, if you can queue up that video, it's worth watching, is what, two minutes? But really, really, very emotional, so he's a very impressive young man, and thank you for queuing the video up. No offense to those who used the phone. Thank you.
We're going to go to the speakers list, I'm going to ask, the speaker's limited remarks are three minutes. We have, trustee Powers will be monitoring, we're going to start with Hamilton Lozado.
Good evening, board, Dr. Williams. My name is Hamilton Lozado, and I work for the Information Technology Services Department. I'm president of the NCC Administrators Association, and I represent twenty-three administrators selected to be part of this bargaining unit, that was formed four years ago. These administrators manage much of the day-to-day operations and advise with admissions, PRSAR, Continuing Ed, Designing and Construction, Distance Ed, the Foundation, Information Technology for Registered Student Financial Services, Veterans Affairs, and many other departments. I represent the administrators that directly interface with our students. I represent the administrators that build new buildings, rehabilitate and maintain the old ones, so our students and faculty can enjoy a conducive learning environment, conducive learning environment. I represent the administrators that evaluate, deploy, and maintain the technology needed for our faculty to be effective at their jobs and our students to be prepared for their futures. Most of the administrators I represent have not seen a salary increase in the last decade. You might be asking yourself, "Why would anybody stick around for ten years without an increase?" I'll tell you why. Ten years ago, we had a new president and a challenging college budget. All ungraded administrators were asked to take one for the team for the good of the college, and we agreed. In the ten years since, the college showed a record enrollment increase, and although enrollment is down now, everyone else has seen an increase while our salaries remain frozen. Over the next several years, we were given many reasons as to why we needed to wait for our increase. Year after year, we were led to believe that things would return to normal, and we would start seeing increases again once this contract was settled and that contract was settled. We were told to wait for a permanent president to be appointed. We were told to wait for middle states, for the middle states issue to get resolved. After six years of excuses and broken promises, we were told by several of the now management confidential folks that the only way we would see an increase was if we organized. This was not what we wanted, or a handless force. Four years ago, the board refused to recognize us as a guild, which forced us into becoming a bargaining unit. Formation of this unit resulted in the division of a once-unified administration. The excluded management confidential group of administrators that once relied on the expectation of a Me Too clause for their increases were instead rewarded with two annual increases. And while middle states were recommended that the administrative salary freeze be resolved, only frustrating, non-productive negotiations have taken place. Past three years have seen various phases of negotiations with little to no progress. We were asking for no more than what the other administrators received, but the current offer is far less than what was afforded to the management confidential administrators. We were led to believe that the current ordinance terms would not be at risk. Now we're being asked to give back far more in benefits than anyone else on campus. Most recently, the board unanimously agreed to reject all recommendations from an independent fact-finder. For the last ten years, we've been asked to do more with less, do more work with less staff, less budget, less resources, and less salary than everyone around us. With the exception of the management confidential administrators that saw two increases in as many years, every other employee has benefited from some form of an increase every single year except for us. The lack of increases has caused irreparable damage to our retirement funds and our day-to-day lives. Large inequities exist between similar titles and different departments. Large inequities exist between the same titles within departments, especially when someone is replaced at fair market value. The administrators on this campus have always worked together. Now suddenly, we are two distinct groups, although titles and responsibilities are simpler. All administrators work hard every day to enforce the board's policies and execute the board's agendas, always concerned about our students, the college, and the community. Why aren't NCCA members being treated so differently? We respectfully request that you do whatever you can to right this wrong. All we are asking for is to be treated fairly and with dignity. Thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of the NCCA.
I have nothing.
Good evening, my name is Maureen Raver, and I'm an assistant director in light long learning and workforce development. I love my work. I run the high school equivalency testing program for the college, and last year, we were the largest public test center on Long Island. I also manage the entrance exams for nursing and healthcare programs, the college-level exam program, and employment testing for select state and federal jobs, as well as I facilitate substance abuse education courses. I was asked to come tonight to help put a face to our organization and provide my histories to how we got here. In January 2015, many of us received an email that stated, "After many years without a formal vehicle for representation, the president and the cabinet have decided to re-establish the administrators council so that the ungraded administrators will have a process by which their concerns and recommendations can be brought to the president and board of trustees." That 2015 email was the start of this administrators group. My personal employment story at Nassau began in 2006 with a part-time position earning forty dollars an hour. The following year, I was asked to come full-time to Nassau. The hourly wage was less than forty dollars I was earning, but I was told salary increases are tied to the NCCFT contracts, and there would be possibilities for advancement. It worked that way for a while. I was thrilled in 2011, when I was made assistant director, and my salary increased to seventy thousand dollars a year. That was my last increase. The official work hour is for an administrator is sixty-seven point five hours per pay period. Most administrators work way more than that, coming in early, leaving late, responding to after-hour phone calls and emails. Seventy thousand dollars annually works out to hourly wage of thirty-nine dollars and eighty-five cents. In 2011, my healthcare cost contribution was sixty-nine dollars and eighty-seven cents. In January 2019, the cost was a hundred and twenty dollars and sixty-four cents. Co-pays, prescription costs, deductibles, cost of living have increased dramatically, while my social security earnings have remained stagnant. We are often asked, "Why do you stay?" Aside from loving my job, which I really do, I love my family even more, and in February 2015, when my husband was diagnosed with stage four lung cancer, I realized I could not change jobs and risk losing health coverage. My husband is my miracle, and continues to work part-time throughout treatments because he does love his job too, and my salary alone cannot support our family. I hope you recognize the dedication of this group of administrators that we have to the college. Hamilton talked about a little bit of it, and I hope that you can help move us forward to some reconciliation. Thank you.
Hi, Frank Fresenda, president of NCCFT. So I had a few things I was going to say, but I think I'm going to stay within the theme of the evening. You know, something came up tonight. Dr. Williams, he talked about this guided pathways, and we talked about it in such a way that it needs to be all hands on deck, okay? We need the administration, we need the board of trustees, we need the faculty, we need everybody to participate in this initiative if it's going to be successful. And now what you have is, you have a group of professionals on the campus, the NCCA, and I don't want to speak for them, but I will speak about them, all right? I mean, I work with these people every day, many members of the NCCFT work with these people every day, all right? And they are dedicated professionals, okay? And what they're talking to you about is how their dignity has been virtually straight, okay? If you want the initiatives, all right, that Dr. Williams is proposing to be successful on this campus, right, everyone has got to participate. You need buy-in from everybody, and you need everybody to contribute in order to make this successful. Therefore, take the concerns of the NCCA regarding respect, morale, and fairness, okay? Because we need them, all right, to be successful, just like we need everybody to be successful. Thank you.
Thank you, but I decline.
The next finance capital committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, December 10th, 2019, at 5:00 PM, followed by the full board meeting. The board will open the public session approximately between 6:15 and 6:30, and resume the public session at approximately 7:30 PM. I request a motion to adjourn the meeting. Do I have a second?
Motion, Marshall.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, meeting is adjourned at 8:00.